Board of Commissioners Staff Meeting, October 8th, 2024. Ask everyone to introduce themselves on the dice.
Chrissy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Sumro Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Okay, item number one on the agenda is the 2025 Human Resources Budget, and we have Frank Spitero.
And Commissioner, while Frank is making his way to the podium here, I just, as we have completed a lot of the big departments in terms of presentations on the 2025 budget, and by "big departments" I mean those with most significant impact on the potential 2025 Administrator's Recommended Budget, we wanted to also provide an opportunity to provide the Board with some data and information on how various human resource metrics impact the overall budget. So to someone watching at home, I just want to be very clear, this is not a presentation on the budget of the Human Resources Department, but this is data, trend data over the past couple of years on compensation benefit risk management data across the entirety of the county's all-funds budget which is north of $1 billion. So, wanted to just give the Board and the public some understanding of how those compensation benefit numbers impact the entirety of our budget to serve as a conversation piece as we move forward into balancing later this year. So Frank, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I want to start out with looking at the total all-funds budget. As a point of context here, for 2022 it was 1.1 billion, in 2023 it went to 1.2 billion, and then 2024 it's at 1.3 billion. So we're going to be looking at a number of expenses, HR-related expenses, and how they impact and impact the total all-funds budget. First, the first line, we're going to look at our salaries. These are total salaries in the county, general fund and non-general fund. You can see the running between 255 million in 2022 up to 300 million for 2024. You'll see throughout the presentation, there was really, I did not include any 2025 data since that's under consideration right now, being reviewed, so these are going to reflect the expenses from 2022 to 2024. Next page, or slide is on benefits. We have retirement, and that reflects the county's contribution to various state retirement systems. And the county's general, for non-public safety, county's contribution is 14% of wages. It's a little higher for the public safety positions, but that 14% is a good bench, is a good base number. And you can see there that the 39 million from 2022 up to 47 million in 2024, it's really a function of the increases in salaries that have occurred over that time period. Next line is medical, and that represents about 86% of the county's, the county's contributions to medical that in, that include health insurance, prescription drugs, the cost for the HRA, and our expenses for Marathon. As you can see, the medical expenses are 52 million up in 2022 and climbed to 55 million. The total number is for 2024 is around, is in the low 60, about 60 million. And that, that extra, that additional money are the contributions by employees into that, into the health insurance, self-insured fund. And it's about 80, county pays about 86% of those costs, and the employee, employees pick up about 14%. And then dental, that's a rather small item there, but there, there is a county contribution for employees that enroll in the dental plan. Next slide is legally mandated benefits, and the first one is Medicare. And there's a, there's a 2.9% tax on savings for Medicare that's split evenly between employees in the, in the county. So that, the number there that represents the 1.4 or 5% of wages, that is the county's contribution to Medicare. Workers' comp represents payments made to employees that are either injured or experience some kind of illness that's work-related. And then unemployment is the payment, is the county's contribution into the State Unemployment Trust Fund, and that has remained constant for the last three years. Next slide is going to look at fringe benefits. The county provides $100,000 of term life insurance for each employee, full-time employee. And for those of us that are, that are getting older, that actually, that number, that $100,000 gets reduced by age over time. But the max, the, the initial payment is, is $100,000. Participation in Wellness, this, this cost here represents the incentives that are paid to employees to engage in Marathon. We feel that that is a very good investment because our data shows that people who are employees who, who actually engage in Marathon have lower health costs. So that actually represents a cost savings of some, to some degree over the total health, healthcare spend, and feel that that is money well-spent. Tuition reimbursement is a constant, spend at $250,000, and we are probably spending close to, virtually all of that is being spent annually, which is great because it shows our employees are actually engaged in improving their skills and their knowledge. And this is only for job-related coursework or classes, so there's a direct benefit to the county from our employees using that tuition reimbursement. And then Employee Assistance Program, that is another really small cost item but important. We actually, right now, we're spending $1.68 per employee per month on the EAP, and we have, our engagement runs around, is run around 8%. They typically look at 5% engagement as a, as kind of a bench, so we're actually, our employees are actually using the EAP services a little more than usual than most employees. So, it's another positive, positive sign and wise investment there. Any questions so far on any of this information? So, on the next slide, I looked at, okay, you know, let's, let's look at total benefits, compensation, in our FTE count, and, and see what the, what that impact is on the overall total budget. And you can see that our total compensation, if you add in the benefits, and those being the legally mandated benefits and the fringe benefits, that number comes to 353 million for 2022 and goes up to 410 million for 2024. When you look at that total compensation as a percent of the total budget, right around 31%, which is a good number in terms of leaving additional funds available for other businesses of the county. Looked at the, our FTE count over time, and you could see moderate growth there, probably in, if I dug a little deeper, I prob, I would speculate that, that a lot of that growth is attributable to JFS and the Justice Center that have large complements and that they've been making a concerted effort to increase the number of employees. Then I thought, well, it'd be interesting to look at, well, our total compensation per FTE, and the total compensation is, again, salaries and all the fringes. You can see that number was 76,000 per FTE back in '22, and it's, it's gone up to 85,000 for 2024. Largely represents the salary increases that have occurred over that period of time. Well, one of the things we work on a lot is, you know, we want to be competitive, we want to remain competitive for jobs, we want to be an employer choice, and we want, you know, we want to be able to demonstrate we pay fair and good wages. So, looking at the union salaries, and part, a large part of that is, is being able to tie to a more appropriate market, and that differs for union employees versus non-union employees. Union salaries actually are market-priced every time we go into a negotiation because we're looking at comparable jobs in other jurisdictions, and using that as, as the basis for our wage proposals. You can see in 2022, the average union salary increase was 3.5%. In 2023, it jumped to 4.9, and that was largely attributable to the increases that we provided to JFS employees in their collective bargaining agreement. They were having serious problems attracting and retaining employees, and those increases in 2023 actually ranged from, they were between 12 and 15%. So that would, you know, that explains that rather large jump there in 2023. And then 2024, the, the number went down to 3.2%. If you look right below that is the non-union, and 2022 was 3, 3.5 for '23, and 3 for 2024. And what is important to us is that there's, there, there's comparability between the non, generally between the non-union and union wages, with the exception of really 2023, and that was, that was a unique situation there. But it shows that, that both groups are being treated approximately the same. In fact, a lot of the agreements, labor agreements over this period of time had have me, or had "me too" clauses in them where their raises were tied to the non-union raises. So, we think that's important to maintain that, that parity. And then, just as a point of reference, I included what World at Work has reported as average increases for the same number of years. You can see we're a little below, but the World at Work represents a national average or national data and combines all different types of jobs. So, we're, we're being responsible with our increases. We're a little below where the benchmarks are set by at least World at Work, and, you know, we're And, you know, we're doing well in terms of our pay. One of the things I wanted to mention on the unions is that in 2019, when I came here, there were fourteen agreements, labor contracts. Today, there are twenty. In fact, there's twenty, and there's one that's in process, so we'll have twenty-one. So there's been a growth in the number of employees that are represented. Most of that growth has been in bargaining units that are maybe between seven to ten employees, smaller units. But the labor environment here is very vibrant, and we're, you know, continuing to see a lot of growth in that, in those areas, so. I included this next slide because of the overall cost that's associated with it. This is post-retirement payouts for unused sick leave and vacation. This is a benefit that's provided by the, in the Ohio Revised Code for cashing out unused sick leave. Their employees are entitled to half of their accrued sick leave, up to a maximum of eight-hundred hours. Actually, there's a couple of breakpoints. There's an eight-hundred-hour breakpoint, and there is a seven-hundred-and-twenty-hour breakpoint, based on the type of pay group that you're in. But you can see that those payments are pretty significant in terms of the number of employees that are participating and the average payouts for each of the employees that are making use of that benefit. At the bottom, because we're still in 2024, I kind of interpolated there and looked at, that looks like we're going to get, have maybe about the same number of employees participating as we did in 2023 with a, with an estimated cost of two-point-nine million. So again, we have a number of employees who use this benefit, and it's there by law, so really not much. It's also embedded in a lot of the bargaining agreements, so we just, it's just a cost that we just have to factor in. This next page deals with risk management and our insurance costs. For many of these listed insurance coverages, we're fully insured. For instance, on property insurance, it's based on a statement of value of all county properties. And you can see some of the increase, for instance, that occurred between twenty-three, the time period between twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four and twenty-five, is, you know, we brought on the coroner's facility and a couple of other newer facilities. So all this impacts what our premiums are going to be for property insurance. What I can add, though, is that just recently, last week, the risk managers, Star Mark, and our property insurance carrier, Liberty Mutual, toured all of our, most of our buildings, and they were, the Liberty Mutual rep was quite impressed with the state of our buildings and our property, and how well-maintained they've been, and particularly the stadiums and just facilities in general, which really speaks well to the job that people in the stadium are doing, as well as county facilities, and maintaining, in some cases, some old and challenging buildings. So, you know, we need to keep up with those, with that maintenance because ultimately, that would be reflective in our property insurance premium. And then stadium liability, we have, we just had our renewal here maybe about a month ago. That's a hundred million dollars on the stadiums. And one of the things we're looking at is, we look at the claims that had been filed from both of those facilities. They're rather low, which is great. And so, you know, we're kind of, we're looking for some ways in which perhaps we can leverage that, the low claims, and maybe bring that number down. It's a, it's a large number. And the increase that occurred from twenty-four to twenty-five on the stadium liability, if you remember from our presentation about a month ago, is largely due to estimated increase of attendance for the Reds. So they must have known something at the time that we didn't know. And so they, they're estimating a rather significant increase in attendance for next year. You see cyber liability, aviation liability, that actually went down when we no longer used the helicopter and replaced it with drones. Crime and employee dishonesty, and then public officials and bond, again, another low-cost item, but wanted to describe that in the past, we had separate bonds for all of the officials that we were required to carry insurance on, and we were able to combine all of those, all that coverage into a single policy that has some cost savings for us over time. That, those are the main expenses that are HR-related that have an impact on the overall budget, and open for any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioner, Vice President Dreehouse, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Frank. It's really, really helpful as we sort through this budget cycle, you know, all the impacts here that are happening with HR. So I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know if you're going to know the answer to the first one. So as we've seen some of the increases to salaries, do we have a sense as to whether or not all the departments have done what we have called a competitive wage study and are somehow trying to figure out if the salaries are where they need to be to recruit and retain people? Has every department done that exercise, and so we're going to start to see a leveling out here?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. Certainly, all of the agencies under the board, you know, the prosecutor's office. We've made adjustments in, I believe, the public defender. We've made, you know, adjustments, market adjustments in virtually every agency in the county by now, yes.
Thank you. Just noting that, you know, as we do that, there's a cost to that, but then at some point, there's a leveling out, and we see a more stable increase as we go. So I think that's good news. The other thing, and I think you've already answered it. I was wondering if the increase to salaries is that, the competitive wage adjustment, but also an increase in employees in general? And then you said the FTEs have gone up.
Yes.
Is it both and?
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you for that. You mentioned on the benefits slide related to medical benefits and the participation of our employees, and that the employee contribution is about fourteen percent. Is that standard?
Actually, it's a little high in the public sector. Now, private sector is a totally different story, but in the public sector, fourteen percent is, is right around where it should be. I've seen employee contributions range from twenty-five to twenty percent. So the fact that we're at fourteen, an average of fourteen, is a great benefit to employees.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I think lastly, I'm paging through. So on the slide that talks about retirement, and I'm asking this question because we've done a competitive wage study. We've been, as you just reported, we're pretty good on benefits. We've done a parental leave policy. We've got tuition reimbursement, all in an effort to recruit and retain employees, as you say, and especially some of the areas where we were having challenges. Nine-one-one operators, the folks over at JFS, the caseworkers, and the deputies in the jail are some that come to mind. So as we look at the retirement page, I'm wondering if you could provide more history to this, go back a few more years so that we can see if there has been an impact related to some of these policy directions, the policy direction of the board, related to all of these things, to see if we are having an impact on how many are retiring? Because what I note is that the number of retirees, interestingly, is the same number in '22, '23, and '20, estimate for '24, but we have more employees now. And so that percentage is lower, you know, the actual number reflects. And so could you provide that to us? Give us a few of the previous years so we can get a better sense of it? And then give us the percentage of individuals that are retiring? I think that might paint a picture for us that would be helpful for us to understand whether or not some of the policy direction is having an impact.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Frank, for your presentation. Very good numbers, very detailed. I was just wondering if you could write a summary for me when we look at the changes, when the percentage is so extensive? I heard your summaries as you were going through, but I would like to, just for me, for instance, like tuition reimbursement. I was, I was wondering who was actually using that? I mean, were we, and so they're using it, and you were putting more into it? And so I'd like to know numbers, like how many numbers of employees are using it?
That's a county-wide benefit, so that's not restricted just to the board. So it extends to all forty-three hundred employees, but happy to do that.
Right, I want to know about all employees, counting. And then the Employee Assistance Program went from zero-point-five percent not to, up to nine percent. And so what are the numbers we're talking about? Because that's more than just more people, we're anticipating more people using the employee assistance. But I'd like to know the numbers, and that means as far as our culture, more people are using it, and not, of course, not wanting to know why, but it's interesting, it would be interesting for me why we think those numbers are going up. So just detailed, when there's a major percentage change. It might be easier for me to maybe circle the ones that I'm interested in, and then I could give it to you that way.
That'd be great.
Trying to go through the whole thing. But other than that, thank you for your presentation. And I, we're just, I think we're doing great with wages. We're doing great with fringe benefits. It's a great place to work at, so thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank, and this may be for you or Mr. Ludo. For me, I wanted to know on the FTEs and the increase of full-time employees, how many and where, what departments, and what are their responsibilities? I do want to keep our eye on, I think we're doing a great job making sure that the people who work here have good benefits and good work environment. But I also want to keep my eye on not just expanding government. I don't want that necessarily on my particular watch. If it's, I want to know these, what are these positions? What do they do? How much do they make? I want to keep my eye on that. The other thing is I'd like to get an updated organizational chart on all that are under our particular watch.
Okay.
Who reports to who, and how much do they make? So I just want to keep my eyes, so we're just not, you know, hiring. We want to hire people. We had, we had empty, that's why I don't understand how we have more FTEs because was it, these were things that were empty and we filled those positions? Or were these newly created positions? You don't have to give me that now, but you can put that in the, so then I have an understanding. These were, maybe they're, we were operating lower because these were vacant positions and we filled them? Or are these new positions that we've created and added to the organizational chart? But I do want to know the organizational chart. I know we have Mr. Ludo, but then I want everybody under, how much they're making, and that, I want to keep my eye on that. And if there are added ones, because it's kind of, I know you, you and Mr. Ludo know. I don't necessarily know everybody that's added to the organizational chart. Today, I guess my question is, Mr. Ludo, you said this is not, we know this is not your particular budget in terms of your staffing and that kind of thing, but it's the overall HR. So I'm trying to figure out, you said it's not 2025 included in this?
No.
This is 24, so what is, what's the message that you're trying to have today?
The main message for today is just as we get into the budget process to give the board a good understanding of the degree to which salaries impact the overall budget, to the degree to which salary increases affect the overall general fund budget, and also how the other items like risk management, insurance, benefits, medical increases, how those all impact the budget? Because as we get into the recommended budget and then ultimately the balancing, there'll be some shifting in some of these, and we just wanted the board to have that general trend data before we get into that discussion for 2025.
Got you. Well, with that being, because I would have liked to, not that I would have voted differently, but I would have liked to have this type of information before we voted on the new medical plan, if you will, because we already done voted on it. So, you know, now we're hearing about it. I'm not saying it's bad, it might be good, but I'm just saying, this is the type of information I'd like to know before we vote. This type of information I'd like to have known before we voted on the increase in insurance, if you will, for Great American Ballpark, because it's, you know, we had an adjustment because it's based on the number of fans. That was my first time hearing that our insurance, we're paying for the insurance in the stadiums, both of them, based on fans. Of course, we want more fans. We don't make any money off the fans, but we'd like to see them. But now there's a cost to the taxpayers. So if I had more information, because for me, I like to see like the whole thing. Not that I would have necessarily voted differently, but I would have been more educated in my vote. So that's why I'm saying now we're bringing this here today. I've never had this type of presentation since I've been here. It's been, it's very helpful, but I think it's very helpful while we're, you know, because you all come to us, meet with us individually. Here's the medical plan, I kind of just go along with what you're talking about. But I also need to know, as I'm voting for these things, what's the overall impact as it relates to the total picture? And then I do need to know if we're going in negotiations, for example, with the next lease for the, for the Bengals possibly. Insurance got to be on the table, because if you get more fans, when you weren't winning, insurance was lower. So when they first got the stadium, insurance was lower because they weren't winning. Now, well, not today, but they started winning, and we've got a team that can win. And now we got more fans, so insurance is going higher. Red's just hired a new manager to win more games. So that mean more people coming. I need to know, so we need to know how to get this, some of this insurance off the backs of the taxpayers, because it's going to go up. We want success, but the success may mean more cost to the taxpayer. So this is very helpful, and it's helpful for me, because being in my first term, some of these things we didn't address right then, but we're addressing them, starting to come up now. And so we need to know. But I do want to know, what is our staffing model? Are we adding people, or is these vacant positions, what's the cost to it? And then what is the organizational chart that we have here, I guess on the sixth floor, whatever? Because we've added some positions, so I want to keep tabs on, before we keep adding. I want to see, what are we doing? Is it necessary? How do we do it? What's the cost? Can we do it more efficiently? Is this the best efficient way? Is the department designed efficiently? So like all companies are doing right now, looking at, looking at that. And I know you see all the numbers, and Mr. Ludo. So I just would like to have this information, not just for the budget going in, but as we're looking at these different topics, because we got to keep our eye on it. We don't want to balloon out. And I don't want anybody saying, man, they got down there and, man, they just ballooned. You know, people say, they just bought all, everybody in here. We got to make sure we keep a handle on it, and you're right about wages and negotiations. We had to leave room for negotiations as well, so glad to have this presentation. Thank you, Mr. Ludo. Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is the ARPA reallocation recommendation. Okay, our next presentation is the ARPA reallocation recommendations.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm happy to be here today to give you a presentation on the recommended reallocations for ARPA funding in the amount of $1.8 million. And I just, just for the folks listening at home, and as a refresher, Hamilton County was awarded $150.8 million through the American Rescue Plan Act in 2021. That must be obligated by the end of this year and expended by the end of 2026. So just as an update, as of September 30th, you can see here on the screen, we have expended just over $100 million of that funding and have obligated an additional $38 million, leaving just slightly over $20 million to be obligated by the end of the year. Now, that number may sound big, 20 million, but I think just today, we have spent 10 million of that on the regional safety complex. So that remaining obligation is going to be halved probably by the end of today. So it may look like a high number still to be obligated, but it is quickly coming down with, with the approval of the construction contract for the regional safety complex last week. Now, before I go into the-
I'll ask you a question on that, and others might have a question. Okay, we're presenting today, we already, even though we didn't necessarily allocate it, but we voted before September. So shouldn't it already be on there as $10 million? Or the, I like, I'm, for me, I want to see it on here for the, you know.
Yeah, just, yeah, that's a very, great question. Let me, let me clarify, please. So the board did allocate a budget for ARPA. That does not, that does not meet the definition of obligation by U.S. Treasury. So even though we had a budget for, say, the regional safety complex of 10.6 million, we hadn't spent that or obligated it until the board took action on that last week. This is as of September 30th, when we do monthly reconciliations of the ARPA funding.
Got you. I'd just like to see, if you're going to make a presentation, I just feel like maybe it's a little asterisk, just so people know at home, because that was the important vote for us. Sorry, did either of y'all have anything on this part?
It begs the question, what's left in this 10 million that we've already given policy direction, but it hasn't been obligated?
About, take out the 10, we also have 2 million for the court technology projects. So that takes it down to 8 million. We also have 1.3 million obligated to C M H A for their broadband project that we are awaiting information from C M H A on, whether that will go forward or not. And we also have roughly a half a million dollars in stormwater grants, which we will talk a little bit more about today. And then we also had, don't have some funds obligated yet, like salaries for next year for administrative. We don't have to technically put a P O in for those. So we're down to roughly about 5 million, which is 1.8, as I'll talk about now, today.
Okay. Before you move on, Commissioner Dumas, do you have anything on this part? Okay.
So before, if you, if the board doesn't mind, before we get into the recommendations, I do think it's important to continually update the public on the, on the progress of the ARPA dollars and the impacts they have made. I'm not going to read through all of the stats on the screen, but just a few I'd like to highlight and thank the partners that have helped us to reach these goals. Obviously, we've already talked about and had a great celebration last week that the regional safety complex is entering the construction phase. We have 745 units of new housing underway. 92 youth organizations receive funding assistance through Inspire. The mobile crisis team is 24/7. It's already reached and served 4,400 individuals. A few more to highlight, we've partnered with, as the board knows, the Urban League on a new building futures program, which is a new construction training program. They have 14 participants graduate in May, another 19 in July. And in that second class, at least three of those students are now employed through the building trade unions with average wage of over $31 per hour. Yeah, I want to pause there, because that's big news.
Yeah, no, it's great news. Yes, and just something else on this, because when people see this, like the 513 relief bus is good. We had 274 engagements, but a lot of people got helped. I don't want people to think we're just out here having events. So I think we need to, it was 20,000, I don't know, last year. So we need to have the numbers, because I want people to say ROI. I don't want them to say, oh, they got that bus and nobody, they just out there having an event. I also think that just some of it, I know you got a bullet point, but just some of it needs to just go a little bit further so that if someone got a PowerPoint like this, they know, of course, you did a good job on here about the affordable housing and how many units we've had. You put the money there. We'd like to see the same thing with the 513 relief bus. There may be some others on here too, that I'm sure we could probably put, how many? You put on here 1.8 million dollars. We trained some folks. We said trained 17 people, I mean, 72 people. This is real powerful, like you said. So just want to have those things, I think would be great. This great mobile crisis, you told how many people helped. Maybe put a, put a number, dollar figure next to it as well.
Yeah, I would, thank you, Commissioner. And I would also direct the public's attention to our website, where the full ARPA report is online, that's updated once a year, that has all of that information in it.
Yeah, that's good, but you got this on, this on YouTube. When people going to see this, then they going to go on our website. So whenever we put something up here, and particularly, I'm very concerned about the 513 relief bus, because 27,000 people, that should not be left off. And I want it on YouTube, I want it on the website, I want it everywhere. So that people know that we just didn't invest money, the stuff is working. Medical help as well as economic help. So just wanted to, I like that.
And then again, just some further highlights. I know the board's aware of all these projects. But again, we had the Cincinnati Music and Arts come in. They received Inspire funding for their marching band. We held the youth employment event this summer, where 243 youth were hired on spot and 205 physicals were completed. And then, of course, just recently, the board was at the Paramount launch of 56-unit housing project in Walnut Hills, one of four affordable housing projects that have been completed. And then lastly, I think the data and the numbers are really important and tell an important story. I do think we are getting some testimonials in that I think are really enrich, enriching the story of the data. We have a couple here to share. A gentleman that completed the C D L training that we partnered with Community Action Agency on is now making $28 an hour at a local trucking company. And then we also had a small business who's part of our small business advisory services. I'm not going to read the quote from you here, but you can see that she said that the participating in this program has been life-changing for her in terms of the certifications she was able to achieve as well as getting consulting services for a business and financial plan. So again, I wish I could spend the next, I could talk two hours about all the great work our ARPA funding has done. But this is just a spotlight and a snapshot of where the funding has gone. So, but as the board is aware, when, when the ARPA plan was first approved back in 2021, we did all recognize that some of the programs would not spend the entirety of the budget. And we recently assessed the plan and have remaining balances ready for reallocation in the amount of 1.8 million dollars. Those, the recommendations that we're making today are based on four key pillars. First is, of course, it's in alignment with the board priorities. Second, that it'll focus on programs that solve critical issues. It'll also minimize the creation of new programs, given the time constraints of ARPA, we have to obligate by the end of the year. And lastly, assurance, assurances that the funds will be spent based on past performance. So with that, we have 1.8 million. And where this funding is coming from are two line items that were simply over budgeted in 2021, because we didn't, we based it on the information we had at that time. So we are recommending reallocating roughly $1.4 million from the satellite office, that was originally budgeted at 2.2 million, and about $400,000 from the administrative costs. We originally budgeted 1.45 for that line item. Again, they were just simply over budgeted based on what we knew at the time. So the 1.8 reallocation, the recommendations include the following that you'll see on the screen, roughly $478,000 for additional food assistance via the Free Store Food Bank. The board may recall that they previously provided $2 million to Free Store for emergency food that was provided directly by Free Store or by their partner agencies. Free Store did meet all the requirements of that agreement with the board. So this funding is being recommended as Free Store unfortunately continues to see unprecedented need for food and anticipates exceeding their food assistance totals that they saw during the pandemic. The second, in about roughly the same amount, minus one penny, we are recommending for utility assistance through Council on Aging. As this board knows, that through the Senior Services Levy, funding is annually allocated to Council on Aging for senior utility assistance and home modifications. That funding, given demand, was exhausted earlier this year. And so we are recommending that ARPA funding be used to restart the services, the service for residents that are eligible under Council on Aging and the ARPA requirements. The third one is just over $350,000 for, for community stormwater grants. Applications were recently received and reviewed for the second round of stormwater grants. We received five applications totaling more than 950,000. The budget was 480. Given the strength of four of the five applications and the, the really positive impact these projects will have on homeowners when it comes to overland flooding, we do recommend reallocating additional dollars to this program to fund four of the five projects. So that would take, again, reallocating 358,000 to that program, which would increase that budget to 838, which would increase the amount allocated to that program by 838,000. And then finally, we have a slight accounting adjustment. This relates to the E M A warehouse and satellite office. We are recommending almost 480,000 go from the satellite office to the E M A warehouse line item. So when we first developed the ARPA budget, the satellite office and E M A warehouse were split between two budgeted line items, because we didn't know at the time that we would find one location to serve both purposes. Now that we have a location in Forest Park that is housing the 513 relief bus, public health vehicles, and the satellite office is under construction and getting close to being finished, we do have solid budget numbers now in terms of the renovation as well as the ongoing operational costs over the next two years. So we are basing the operational costs on the square footage between the use for the satellite office and the ARPA-eligible uses for E M A. So really, this is just splitting those, it's, it's the warehouse and satellite office just split between two line items. And the warehouse is taking up more of a cost given, given the size of the vehicles that E M A has in that warehouse versus the satellite office. So that's the 1.8 million that we're talking about today. I, I will say, we have another reallocation that we're working on right now in terms of what we think will be spent before the end of the year and how much to encumber before the end of the year. So we will have another reallocation coming before the board, probably in late November. We are recommending that that reallocation, the remaining balance, we're, we're estimating right now between 1.5 and 2 million. That could change based on our projections. We are recommending that be reallocated to affordable housing. You can see the results. I know the board's well aware of the affordable housing projects that are going on right now. And the recommendation is based on that allocating additional funds towards this effort will continue to help meet the board's priority of creating additional affordable housing. It helps meet the continued need for housing production in our region, and it has lasting impacts once the ARPA dollars are finished. So there's still time to discuss on this, but just wanted to get the board thinking about it as this will come before you, probably in the next month to month and a half. So in terms of next steps, would love to have any board discussion, feedback, questions on the 1.8 million. We would like to bring forward a resolution memorializing this reallocation within the next couple of weeks, so we can get moving on those contracts with, say, Free Store, Council on Aging, and the communities for the stormwater grants, if the board so chooses. We have to get those done before mid-December. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. And thank you to you and your team and everybody trying to get these contracts out the door so we can move from, you know, voting on it, but getting it to the appropriate entities and get them out and moving and grooving. I do have a couple questions. I think you answered one of them. What is the absolute deadline for re-appropriating these dollars? Or is there a deadline?
Well, we have to have P, purchase orders or contracts in place for all this funding by 12/31/24. So typically, the board's last meeting is mid-December. So we would have to have any contracts approved by the board by mid-December.
Okay. The reason I was asking that, as we are looking at our, our budget and making a, a decision on the 2025 budget, for me, there may be things that we're trying to do. Obviously, we have limited funds. And I just want to make sure, because there may be something in there that is eligible, that we can't maybe fund with the general fund dollars, but might be able to be funded with the leftover funding. So I don't want to necessarily commit everything, because there may be something that the board may agree on that we might be able to use some of those funds for. So I want to have these kind of in tandem for me versus I've spent up all the ARPA money and now we've got some, we've got a general fund problem. So that's one thing. Not saying this first allocation, I'm talking about for the next one. Second is the affordable housing. I'd like to know, we all support it. We put $40 million toward it. We did another reallocation toward C D F already. I'd like to just kind of get a, understand it, like how much have we allocated toward C D F for affordable housing? If you don't know right now, you can get it to us. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But I think that's important as we go to the next one. I know that all of us have indicated, we definitely believe in affordable housing. I do as well. However, there seems to be not as much product available throughout the county. And we, and I know the city is doing a lot already in the city. And so I know we had a major announcement today. I was very happy and pleased about it. And one of the things I really, really wanted out of that was this lad Smart House. And all of us were there. That has happened. It's out in the Anderson Township area. But I just wanted to make sure I was told that there's maybe not, either there's not product or we can't get more product out in the county area. So I want to know more about that before I just agree to giving another reallocation on top of the 40 million or 33.5 million or whatever it was. The next thing I wanted to also, as, Mr. Ludo, I wanted to maybe point this out to you. I was out in Jerel Baptist Pantry. They have a food pantry, and they were in need of some assistance. And I know that the Free Store Food Bank helps keep these smaller food pantries there. So I wanted to, as we go to this, I don't know if this could help with Jerel Baptist Church, that's been with their food pantry. So I wanted to put that on the radar and someone can get back with them if this additional funds will allow Free Store Food Bank to do more with the smaller food pantries. The other thing on stormwater grants, I'm all for that. I think we need something showcasing what we've done with the stormwater grants, what are these areas that we have helped? I was at an event on a resident, Mount Healthy, had some concern and said, when are, when are you all going to do something with all this stormwater flooding on Hamilton Avenue? I don't know if we've done anything or planned to do anything, but I would like to know if the stormwater grant would be able to help Mount Healthy in any way? Or have we already helped Mount Healthy? So you could get that to, get that to us in writing. But I wanted to, I'm sure they might be watching saying, hey, well, what are we gonna, when is Mount Healthy going to be looked at? So we may have already done it, or this might can help. So I wanted to, to highlight that. Certainly support the seniors and because Duke Energy is going up with another raise on the rates. So seniors are really going to get squeezed. They've already had gone up one time, now looking to go up again. So I think more seniors, well, really everybody, but definitely the seniors who are on fixed incomes will need this more, more than ever. Those were the things I wanted to say. I do want to put out that I know we had been meeting and one of the- I do want to put out that I know we had been meeting, and one of the issues was possibly the 5-1-3 relief bus. I still think there are things that originally that I'd like to have seen the bus do, and I want to make sure those things are funded, and I think that's how we came up with that number, so that we can fund those things. So I'd like to make sure those things are fully funded before talking about real. I know it's not in here, but it might be in the one coming up, and I just want to be on the record that there are a lot of things that, still a lot of work to be done with the 5-1-3 relief bus, in terms of making sure we're properly funded to do these other exciting but necessary things with, with citizens. So those are the questions that, oh, my last question, I know Commissioner Dumas will probably expound on it, this is her initiative, the Satellite Office, but I'm equally as concerned. I know you said we'll take some money out of here and there, but I would like to know what's the date on this Satellite Office? I mean, excited about it, and if we're cutting some of the budget, does that affect anything?
It does not affect the Satellite Office.
Okay.
Simply overbudgeted.
Okay, I'm sure Commissioner Dumas will get more in depth with it, but I'm just as excited about, let's get this thing moving. Okay, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you, thank you, Holly, for the presentation. You know, my first reaction to the reallocation is that it looks a lot like what we did in the very beginning, which was address some short-term things that are still emergent needs in the community, but also making some long-term investments. So the short-term being the Free Store Food Bank and the Council on Aging allocations, and then a more long-term approach through the stormwater grants that'll be able to solve long-term issues that have been going on in the community for a long time. So I, I like this approach, have always liked this approach, so I think that's a good idea. I also am interested in the next round related to housing. I mean, we've said over and over again, it's a high priority, and so I think that's probably an appropriate use of those funds, but we'll be interested to see what that actually pans out to be. One question I have, as we've gone through this, and when we talk about emergent needs, and one of the things that we saw being one of the top emergency needs was eviction prevention, and I don't see eviction prevention on here, and I'm wondering why that is, and if it was contemplated, and then, you know, you decided, we don't have the mechanisms in place to do that, or it's no longer as high-end issue as the utility assistance or the Free Store Food Bank? I mean, was there a conversation related to that? Or any other priority that we saw play out in the first allocations of ARPA? But things have shifted and changed to kind of realign the priorities?
I'd have to think about that and get back to you, but I know we looked at, we did look at the entire list of programs that we had funded to make sure, again, anyone we contracted the funds with could get the funds out the door and get them obligated before the end of the year. Rental assistance or eviction prevention was, was not on the list. I mean, we've done 100 million, as you know, through, through the other funds, through ARPA, through the U.S. Treasury, but we, it would be a very smaller amount comparatively speaking, and I do believe CDBG may have provided some mechanism to legal aid, but I can double-check on that.
Just curious, because it was such a high priority before, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not so much surprised that it's not on here. I would rather it's just what was the rationale for prioritizing these two things and not having that included on the list? I was curious. I'm sure there are some, some things I'm just not thinking of related to eviction prevention. The other thing, and I was too going to ask about the Satellite Office. So I, I don't have a really clear understanding as to what agencies are going into the Satellite Office at this point, and, you know, if, and what renovations have been necessary, and I know Commissioner Dumas probably has a better understanding of this, because it was her initiative, but could, could maybe we get a presentation, or, or maybe it's just for myself, as to how that's going? And, and I'm glad that we're under budget there, because it allows us to do other things, but I'm just curious about that. So maybe a, a different conversation about the Satellite Office and what, what is going in, what can be utilized, are there public-private partnerships in play here that would alleviate some of the cost on the county side, if there's a private partnership going in and doing something in that building as well? So just want to continue to have that conversation, so I have an understanding of how that's moving along.
Commissioner, just so you're aware, off the bat, I mean, Job and Family Services will be out there, as well as, as needed, our 5-1-3 relief staff will be out there, because that's where the bus is housed, and they'll have additional storage space out there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
I'm looking at you, you looking at me.
Our introduction, I'll wait for that. So anyway, thanks for your presentation, just a couple comments. We talked about the Satellite Office, and so I had a question as it relates to the EMA Warehouse. They were completely funded, so when we add additional monies to them, how does that, on the residual, I guess, affect of that? Does EMA funding go somewhere else, what's left over? Because we're adding money, because they were not under budget, they were on target. So how does that work?
Sure. We originally budgeted for EMA a total of 1.2 million, so that was, that was the EMA Warehouse for all the, the storage that was ARPA-eligible. Also, that included, the board may recall, they added 200,000 for mass care for EMA, so that'll also come out of that pot. And then any other remaining PPE that they bought earlier in 2021 with ARPA dollars, we're actually, though, adding money to EMA to, because of the change in the warehouse square footage, so.
Okay, and that's what I was wondering, were you anticipating that you were going to have to ask us for more money, but because we took some from the Satellite-
Correct.
... arrangement? So, and as it relates to the Satellite Office, I brought that up initially before we had even started talking about Mercy and the possibility of, of moving. So all the departments that I had thought about might be good to be there, may not need to be as many departments there, but I think it's still a necessity, because it's a little farther out and, and all of that, so I'm real happy that we're still looking forward to the Satellite Office. And the future reallocation, I just wanted to say, of course, affordable housing has always been our priority, but, and I'll keep saying it, the tiny homes for homeless people, some of them are fabricated already, and all you have to do is have some county land, or we can buy some land. I think we have enough land for the homeless, it's getting, getting cold, and so it's okay to have, like, this morning when we went, it was awesome for disability, but can we get some tiny homes done? I'm going to keep saying that, like I kept saying about Lincoln Heights. So, and also veteran housing, and also re-entry housing. So all of these units are, are great, and we're meeting our priorities by doing this, but specifically, housing for homeless, I would love to see, even if we had to do the tiny homes, that would be a temporary placement for them, but they are very nice. I have beautiful pictures of what they look like, and they provide the need that they have, so. But anyway, I'll take a better look at the future reallocation, but it looks good to me now, so thanks.
If you don't mind, Commissioner, the re-entry housing, CDF is still working very hard on that. So that's still on, on their plate to make sure that happens.
And so how are they working hard? They're looking at plots of land-
Permanent housing.
-permanent housing for re-entry, and so that should come up next week, probably.
I don't know about next week, but they are, they are, it's, it's on their, it's on their to-do.
Okay, well, thank you, yeah. That's so important, yeah, yeah. That's all I had.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. There is no further business. I make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.